Welcome, everybody. Thank you for attending the School Board Candidate Forum. All the candidates for the school board have been invited to participate. My name is Charlotte Westby and I am the Vice President of the Bloomington PTSA Council. We are honored to co-sponsor this event with the Bloomington League of Women Voters. Both the PTSA and the League of Women Voters are both volunteer, non-personal political organizations that never endorse any political party or candidates. Our purpose in hosting this forum is to provide you, the public, with the opportunity to learn more about the candidates so that you can make informed voting decisions. Your vote is your power and will result in your voice being heard. Election Day is Tuesday, November 5th, with early voting available here at the Civic Plaza, beginning tomorrow, September 20th. We hope that this forum, as well as the candidate videos that will soon be posted on our website and throughout the city websites, and be replayed on Bloomington TV. This will provide you with information that you need to assist you in making your voting decision. Thank you, audience, for attending tonight's forum. Please write your questions on the note cards that we have put on all of your guys' chairs. If you guys need more, simply just raise your hand. We've got five card collectors around, so just simply raise your hand and one of them will come pass you one or collect it from you. So, my five card collectors, can you guys at least just raise your hand so everyone can know who you are? All right. Thank you, candidates, for the time and effort you have dedicated to running for office and for participating in this forum. In these days of politics in Bloomington, we can be proud of all of our candidates for their effort to run positive campaigns and for demonstrating the honor of being the office they seek. This reflects the attitude and demeanor of our community as a whole. We ask that members of the audience not clap, cheer, or otherwise do anything that may disrupt the forum and disrupt any of the recording processes, since this is being recorded. Thank you to the members of the League of Women Voters for planning this event with me and for the city of Bloomington for letting us use the Civic Plaza chambers here. Thank you also to the Bloomington TV for recording this and for broadcasting the forum later on the Bloomington TV. This forum will also be posted online to the Women League of Voters, their website will also be on the Bloomington website and probably other Bloomington websites as well. Lonnie is going to be our moderator tonight. She is highly skilled moderator, who has moderated many league forums. She is a member and she's a past president of the Edina League of Women Voters. Lonnie will now identify the rules of the forum and then identify all of the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me join in welcoming everyone. I am Lonnie Scrantner, a member of LWV Edina and the moderator for tonight. Before we get started, everybody take out your cellphone and silence it or turn it off, please, so that we are not interrupted during the evening. I'm checking mine. We will try to cover as many issues as possible in the time that we have. If your questions are not addressed tonight, feel free to contact candidates directly. The views expressed in this forum will be those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters or the Bloomington PTSA. The fact that the League and the Bloomington PTSA are sponsoring this forum does not imply support for any candidate. All of the candidates registered with the Secretary of State were invited to this forum. One of the candidates, Scott Christensen, is unable to attend, so you will need to look him up and do your diligence as a voter. The rules for tonight, speaking order was set before the forum and will rotate with each question. Each candidate will have one minute for opening remarks to introduce themselves to you, the audience and the community. Each candidate will again get one minute to answer each question that comes from the audience and another one minute for their closing remarks. League volunteers will time the candidate responses and hold up signs, hold them up so that the candidates can see what they look like, that show you that you have 30 seconds left and when you must stop. Candidates, please obey the stop sign. I am a 39-year veteran of the classroom. You don't want to see me in action. This forum may also have some lightning rounds where candidates will be asked to answer a question briefly, either in one sentence or a yes and no with a because. I can recognize run-on sentences. A sentence should be proper grammatically, please, because you're running for the school board. As a moderator, I ask all the questions. LWV Bloomington and the PTSA determines which questions will be asked and attempts in good faith to cover the topics of interest indicated by the submitted questions. All written questions become the property of LWV Bloomington. No campaign materials, signs, brochures, cards, buttons, or clothing with candidate information are allowed in the forum. And I think we look clear. It's time to introduce the candidates for Bloomington School Board, who are seated in alphabetical order to my left. Maureen Bartolata, Nellie Corman, John Moravec, Mia Olson, and Heather Starks. I would like you to note that John's telephone number in the voter guide is wrong, and so at the end of the forum, if you want to see me or John, you can get the correct phone number if he's one of the candidates that you want to contact. We will start now with candidates' openings remarks, straight through the alphabet, one minute each, beginning with Maureen.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Maureen Bartolata and I'm running for reelection to the school board. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the PTSA Council for hosting tonight's event. This is an important opportunity for citizens of Bloomington to witness a good dialogue about current issues and education policies and the future success of Bloomington schools. I've worked for the past 16 years as a member of the board to make sure that any student in Bloomington, no matter where they were born or where they live, has access to the same quality instruction and opportunities that my children had. This is easier said than done, as all schools in Minnesota face mounting fiscal challenges. I'm proud to serve on a school board that has made sensible fiscal decisions while not sacrificing the quality of student experiences. We know our reputation exceeds our borders and that families move to Bloomington to take advantage of the opportunities we provide. If reelected, I will continue this tradition of excellence for the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you. Nellie.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this forum. It's always really nice to be able to be here. I am Nellie Corman and I have been on the board for the last seven and a half years. I have had the honor of serving the families and the children of Bloomington. My husband and I have three kids. The oldest one graduated from Kennedy. My husband graduated from Jefferson, and we have two more students, one in the middle school and another one at the high school. I'm also a teacher. I am a Spanish teacher for St. Louis Park High School and have 25 years of experience, so also got some action going in the classroom as well. And I'm just very passionate about education and I like to tie whatever is happening in the world of education with communities, because I believe in that strong connection. You know, when schools are strong and we provide strong public schools, then we have strong communities and that's what's best for our societies.
Thank you. John.
Well, thanks to the League and for everybody coming. It's nice to see so many neighbors and friends out here. My name is John Moravec and I'm running to put our kids first. I'm running for school board to bring a voice for all community members to the district. I believe that we need leaders in our schools to listen and we're present and honor the work, effort, and skills it takes to be an effective educator. Our teachers and staff deserve to be treated with dignity and as professionals of the hour with reasonable responsibilities. I have a background in business, have a PhD in educational policy administration, and my academic and professional lives have been centered around planning for the future across many cultures around the world. My volunteer work is focused on raising voices for those of us who have been ignored or not listened to. So, I've seen what works and I have ideas for how we can improve, and I hope to bring my deep expertise into our district, show leadership, contribute to the conversation, and find solutions so we may best help students and our community members achieve their best education futures.
Thank you. Mia.
Hi, my name is Maya Olson. That's okay. I actually tell people it rhymes with hi-yamaya and then they remember. I am passionate about public schools, the heart and soul of a community. I have lived in the Bloomington community for over 30 years. My husband grew up here, graduating from Lincoln, his three brothers from Kennedy. My mother-in-law now works in the Poplar Bridge Elementary School lunchroom. We raised two children, Ailey and Kai, in the Bloomington Public Schools. They were off to a great start in early childhood education at Southwood, up through graduation at Jefferson. I have experienced our schools as a parent volunteer, as well as through the eyes of a substitute teacher. This is my 25th year teaching in every grade level, preschool through middle school throughout the district, including for a wide variety of specialists. I enjoy working with students of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities, and I welcome new experiences each day. Bloomington is a district in which I am proud to both live and work.
Heather.
Hello, my name is Heather Starks and I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Bloomington PTSA Council for putting on this event and giving myself and my fellow candidates a chance to share a little bit about ourselves. I am born and raised in Bloomington. My mother was from the first graduating class of Kennedy High School. I'm a Kennedy grad, my husband's a Kennedy grad, and our first child will be graduating from Kennedy in 2021. So, we have three children. Our oldest is a junior at Kennedy, our middle is a freshman at Kennedy, and our youngest is a fifth grader at Hillcrest. I am heavily involved in the school districts throughout their educational careers. I've served on many committees, and I've also been heavily involved in PTA, which has led me to a role where I'm the president of the Minnesota PTA. I'm in my third year in that position, and I absolutely love the work that we can do there. Through that work, I've really found a passion to help connect families to their school communities, and I would like to have an opportunity as a member of the school board to find stronger and deeper ways that we can do that in Bloomington.
Now, we will move on to audience questions, and we will rotate differently for each question. We will start this round with John. What is your one strength that will most benefit students?
I think that my one strength is, I assume I'm the only person here with a master's degree in business and business experience, also tied together with a PhD in educational policy, and bringing these two things together makes me kind of a nerd who likes to look at numbers and look at numbers hard, making sure that our money is well-spent and well-appropriated. And also, be able to tie that also in with policy and bringing that in with a leadership perspective.
Thank you. Maya.
I am compassionate. I care about every single student that comes through our doors and every single student. It's our job to educate every single student, and I have interned at the Bridge for runaway youth, so I have experienced, I have had the opportunity to experience being an intake crisis counselor, as well as a crisis phone counselor, and so I like to listen to students and find out what is going on with them, if they're having any issues. I think it's just as important to care about their backgrounds and what's going, and the reason behind their behavior, as well as educating them.
Thank you. Nellie.
Yes, thank you. Well, I would say that the fact that I'm an educator, you know, having experience in education as a teacher and also at the administrative level, that provides me with enough opportunities for getting to know more about the different needs in the schools, in education in general. I have a BA in foreign languages teaching and an MA in educational leadership. At the more personal level, not so much professional, I tend to be a strong person who is an eager learner. I keep trying and trying, you know, when I want something to happen or to accomplish, and I always look for different ways for young people to follow similar paths. I like to achieve high and I hold high expectations, and that goes for the people who work with me and for students.
Thank you. Maureen.
Well, I feel my strength is that I'm a collaborator. On the board, we need to all be able to take seven different opinions and try to get one path that will help the students and benefit them, and I think collaboration is one of the most important things, is being on the board.
Thank you. Heather.
I would have to say perspective. So, I'm able to look at issues from multiple views. So, I've been a student in this district, so I know what it's like to be a student. I've been a parent of students in the district. I've been a teacher. I used to teach American history and English and reading to middle schoolers in the Rosemont Apple Valley Egan School District, so I can see things from a teacher perspective. And then, when I actually was considering running for school board, one of the things that I realized is I didn't have a strong perspective on policy and finance, and so I enrolled myself in an education policy fellowship program and learned that. And so, I feel like I have multiple ways of looking at issues that can be a strength to our students in Bloomington.
Thank you. Question two, we will start with Maya. Do we have an achievement gap problem here in Bloomington, and if yes, what do you feel are some steps that can be taken to fix it?
We definitely do have an achievement gap, which I have learned more about recently, and prevention is key. I believe that we need to offer early childhood education for all to begin with, so that kids can start off on the right foot, on equal ground. I believe that we need to realize that a lot of kids come to school already with an achievement gap, and teachers need to educate every student who comes through the door. So, we need to make sure that they have what they need in order to do so. I think we need to reach out to advocates and mentors and address poverty and other social emotional needs, as well as attract staff with diverse backgrounds, and we need to believe in our students.
Thank you. John.
I used to run the Urban Leadership Academy, coordinate the Urban Leadership Academy at the University of Minnesota, and I would say this, that we just simply do not understand the achievement gap yet. It's been a crisis for a while, and yet we seem to have inadequate research on that. One of the issues is that data quality is simply poor. Districts across Minnesota need to standardize on what we measure and how we match spending on to really close that gap. But, when you get to my perspective, what I really think is that it really seems to me the gap exists because what we teach is not necessarily relevant for diverse youth, and I think we need to look hard at what we're teaching.
Thank you. Heather.
Yes, so we do have an achievement gap. As John mentioned, it's something that we've been looking at for several years. One thing that I get a little bit frustrated about in education is we tend to look at the symptoms and we treat the symptoms, and then we're not looking at the root causes as to what is creating those symptoms. And so, I would like us to spend a little bit more time on root causes. For example, if we're looking at attendance, which can sometimes be an indicator of achievement gaps, we're looking at are students showing up or not, but we're not necessarily asking ourselves why if they're not showing up. I also would echo Maya in talking about early childhood. We need to convince our state to stop funding early childhood by grants. It needs to be funded on a more consistent basis. I really like the approach of home visits that creates a stronger connection between school and family, and then also looking at our teaching force and diversifying our teaching staff as well.
Thank you. Maureen.
Well, I do believe there's a gap problem, but I believe that Bloomington has been trying to address it by our three- and four-year-old programs, are getting our students ready for kindergarten, and we're also working on the goal of having all third graders reading by their grade level, and we also look at the economic achievement, the economic gap, and again, the other gaps that are out there that we need to address.
Thank you. Nellie.
Yes, thank you. Minnesota is one of the states with one of the best education systems that you can find in the country. However, it is also one with the worst achievement gap that we can see in the US. So, the gap, it's not only academic, but it's also economic, it's racial, it's opportunity gap, and of course, we do have that gap in Bloomington because we have that gap in Minnesota. So, Bloomington is not the exception. Of course, you know, we have taken steps at the board level and with administration and providing different services to our students, trying to address that issue, you know, coming from early childhood programming, you know, providing opportunities for parent engagement, opportunities for coaching career for our students too, and we will continue to work on addressing the issue so that we can help our students be successful and be ready for the 21st century.
Thank you. Question three, we will start with Nellie. Do Bloomington Public Schools need to hire more teachers and staff from diverse communities? If yes, how would you attract them?
Wow, that's a good question, because that's an issue that everybody struggles with in Minnesota, and everybody's trying to find the different ways of how we can bring more teachers of color. I'm a teacher of color, you know, I'm an immigrant myself, so of course, I think that our kids need to see people who look like them. However, it is important that we don't only hire people of color, but that we hire the people with the cultural competence, so that they know how to work with the students in the classroom. And I know that in Bloomington schools, we have also tried to provide different opportunities as well through the different partnerships we have with universities, when they bring students into our classrooms to work as in student teaching or different programs that we have, and so that has been a way for us to address the situation. I think definitely more effort needs to be put at the legislative level, so that we can help people become, people of color become teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather.
Yes, I think this is a really poor, actually mentioned it in my last answer, to diversify our teaching force is a very important thing for us to do. There was actually a bill in the legislature last year that was trying to address this in multiple ways. One of the ways is what's called a Grow Your Own program, so it's where teachers would recognize students that they've been teaching, especially middle school and high school students that have an aptitude for teaching, and you help support those students in learning about education, learning about teaching while they're still a middle schooler or high schooler, and then they have the opportunity to explore that beyond. Also, talking about some barriers for folks getting their educational degrees. Student teaching is free work for a semester. That's a really huge barrier for folks that can't work for free for that long, and so just looking at some barriers and some reasons why we can't attract teachers of diversity and finding ways to make that happen.
Thank you. Maureen.
Well, I agree with what everybody said. We are, in Bloomington, we have a partnership with the University of Minnesota at Mankato, where we have a very close relationship with their student teachers and our students going to Mankato and coming back and going, being part of that Grow Your Own program. That's what I was going to talk about. So, we, you know, we're really trying to encourage that, and I think a lot of our students are taking advantage of that program. Thank you.
Thank you. John.
I believe that Mankato actually fired Bloomington from that program, if I remember things correctly. But, I think that, yes, we need to hire people that are much more diverse, and there's, I mean, it'd be disingenuous of us to think that there isn't talent out there. Disingenuous of us to think that there isn't a pool to hire from. I think that we need to really engage more in outreach for minority teachers. And during this process, we have to remember that not only are there color differences and cultural differences, but there are also historical differences with, I'm being told to stop.
Thank you. Maya.
Yes, we need to recruit teachers, administrators, and staff with diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds, so that students see people who look like them in the schools, as well as mentors, and reaching out to the community to actively seek volunteers with diverse backgrounds to help support students in schools. We also need to make sure that these volunteers and staff feel welcome in our schools, parents feel welcome in our schools. Because if students see more staff that look like them, they'll be more likely to stay in school, and that's really what's contributing mostly to that gap that we were talking about. We need to provide alternatives to out-of-school suspensions such as mentoring and counseling services, and make sure that we do all that we can to keep students of color in our schools and attracting and recruiting teachers is one of those.
Thank you. We'll begin the next question with Heather, and there are a couple of questions here that deal with equity, and I'm going to kind of try to combine them. Describe what the term equity in education means to you, and how should Bloomington schools assure equity, particularly when it comes to discipline and race?
In one minute.
Yeah.
All right. Now, I anticipated there was going to be a question about equity, since this is a conversation that is all across education, so I actually brought a visual, which is a terrible thing to use when you're in this setting, but it's hard to explain verbally. If some of you may recognize these slides, it's where there are students that are trying to watch a sports game, sports game, baseball game, and there's a barrier of a fence, an opaque fence in between, and one slide shows each child receiving the same size stool, and only one child can now see over the fence. The next slide shows each child receiving the size stool that they need to all see over the fence, and then there's a third slide that now removes the fence completely or makes it a see-through fence. So, for me, the definition of equity is finding what size box does a child need in order to succeed, to see over the fence, or what are some barriers that we can remove, what are some fences that we can remove for our students?
Thank you. Maureen.
That was a great answer. Again, equity in education is seeing that all students get what they need to learn, and I believe that Bloomington Schools is doing a good job. I mean, we've got our Bloomington Career and College Academy that's for the children that are not on a path to go to college, that they want to get a good-paying job when they graduate from high school, and they might be interested in mechanics or something like that, and that, you know, that's equity for those students. Equity regarding discipline is another thing we've been working on. We have an agreement with the state to work on our discipline and trying to keep the numbers of diverse students out of, in school, not being disciplined by taking them out of school. They stay in school. Thank you.
Maya.
So, it looks like we have reached an agreement with the Human Rights Department to address implicit bias that influences perceptions in the school of student behavior, and so keeping students in school is always the goal, and we need to make sure that we have, reach out to the community and reach out to possibly having full-service community schools which offer counseling, that bring social and medical and family-centered after-school activities and services to the school campus. Equity is something that we need to do to make sure that everyone has what they need to ensure that their opportunities and resources and services are they need to ensure that their opportunities and resources and services are distributed evenly, not evenly, so that each student has the opportunity to reach their full potential. So equitably and fairly.
Thank you. Nellie?
Thank you. Well, I think this has been very well described by, um, other candidates, but especially with, um, the one example that Heather showed to you. Um, so at the education level, it is meeting our students where they are, providing, um, accordingly to their needs because every kid comes with a different need, a different perspective, a different family situation, um, language barriers, for example, to, uh, kids that are moving constantly from one place to the other one. So that's what equity means, you know, is providing to our kids opportunities, meeting them where they are and helping them become successful. And I could tell you a lot about what's, what's happening in Bloomington and what we're doing in Bloomington. But basically, when the Human Rights Commission approached school districts with concerns regarding discipline, because it's always, it's usually the, the black kids and the Latino kids, the kids of color who end up being in the suspension, the quiet room and suspension. Bloomington was the first school district to go and say, we have a plan. So if you have any questions about that, you know, we can't talk about it more, just have to stop.
Thank you. John?
All right, Nellie's got it. Uh, equity is meeting kids where they are. So some action steps that we could take is that we could continue to educate ourselves on the differences between equity and equality. We can support the Office of Educational Equity to the very best that we can. These folks, these guys are my heroes, right? Uh, we can keep, uh, ordering materials with diverse, uh, characters, um, and diverse, uh, for, for classrooms. Keep asking tough questions, not just, uh, from an administrative stance, but also in the classrooms and the community, find ways to facilitate and foster dialogue. We have to push for far more than just, uh, Black History Month. We have to make our art classes more diverse, focus less on just Western culture, but there's a whole planet of really cool stuff out there. And we have to teach our kids that color really does matter. And we have to stay vigilant for all these kids to make sure that we are meeting them exactly where they are.
Thank you.
Did I make that?
We will begin the next round with Maureen. What characteristics do you bring that make you well-qualified to negotiate contracts with teachers and other district employee bargaining units?
What characteristics? Well, I, again, feel I'm a good collaborator and we need to, uh, take into consideration how much money that we have to negotiate with. It's our first thing. And, um, I hope that I am able to talk to people and make them understand where we're coming from. Um, you know, it's taxpayer money, it's your money that we turn around and pay our employees with. And I think everybody understands that. And over eighty-five, I think it's eighty-five percent of our budget goes directly to wages and benefits. So, you know, when the price of fuel goes up and the bus, we gotta pay to fill the buses, you know, that's, it cuts into the money that we gotta have to pay our other bills. So I hope that I'm able to collaborate.
Thank you. Heather?
Um, I think that this is where that perspectives piece comes in again. Um, you know, I've been a teacher and I've been, um, in the school system and so I know what each, well, I don't know. I can take a stab at what each of the different, um, groups, negotiating groups, um, are facing in their schools. And so having that perspective and listening to, uh, what, uh, the teachers, the paras, the custodians, the bus drivers, whomever it is that we're talking to is looking for. Um, I, uh, sat in on several of the contract negotiations a couple of years ago and was able to gain some perspectives too and how that worked. Um, and so I think that those bring, um, some qualifications for myself for moving forward.
Thank you. Maya?
Okay, I have, I have not sat in on budget negotiations, negotiations. However, um, I would definitely put the students first in any, in any budget negotiations. Always cutting where it's least impactful to students. For example, asking teachers, and I would ask teachers for ideas because they have very creative and sound ideas from working directly with the students. And I would always look at long-term goals. For example, class sizes, if they're, you know, if we make immediate cuts and their class sizes, uh, go up, then this will weaken our schools and we'll lose families and teachers. So I think that we need to make sure that we keep our community, our public schools strong in order to attract families and therefore businesses, workers, and, and make our stronger, our community stronger.
Thank you. John?
Um, well, Maya's was good. Um, I think that we're a human-centered enterprise and that means we have to put our people first. Uh, students, uh, teachers, staff, I mean, we have to show care, uh, bring in understanding and empathy, I mean, real empathy for our working families. We have people in the district who have not seen a living wage, uh, increase in over a decade. And that, to me, that is a bit of a, bit of a shame. Um, you know, my, my background, uh, you know, look at finances, but also, you know, work with people, understanding, um, the, the basics of human-centered, um, uh, businesses, I think we could show that, the care, that we can put our people first, um, to create win-win situations for the district and for the people who work in it.
Thank you. Nellie?
Would you, would you mind repeating that question, please?
What characteristics do you bring that make you well-qualified to negotiate contracts with teachers and other district employee bargaining units?
Okay, thank you. Um, I would say, um, one of my strengths is, um, I'm a good listener. I think I am. Uh, I listen, I ask questions, I go back and listen again, ask again, analyze, um, also go and, um, ask the, the, the people who are in charge of finances in the, in the school district as well, because that's important information to have before you make decisions. And I try to put myself in the situation of the other person, you know? I also like to get a raise. Um, and at the same time, I, I have to think, um, I have to think about the kids, I have to think about the taxpayers, I have to think about the teachers, you know, if, or any other, um, people in any other units. If, if we give this much now, can we give that much later? Or is it gonna be difficult later on? Um, another thing I would say is I like to advocate. So becoming frustrated several times and not being able to provide people with what they need or what they would like, I opt for, um, advocating legislature. So maybe that helps too.
Okay, thank you. This next question is very linked to the last one. And we will begin with John. Are Bloomington public schools adequately funded? If not, where should we look to get more funding?
Yeah, I don't think that our schools are adequately funded. Um, we're in situations where we're looking at making cuts, we're in situations where we have to go to the people every ten years in a referenda to bump up our funding and to maintain that. And I think that two things that we, that we, all of us in the room can work on, especially people elected to the board, uh, would be working to create a second Minnesota miracle. Let's get our schools off of our property taxes and out of the state, and into a state, coming back from the state bucket. The other thing is that we've got taxpayer-funded lobbying organizations telling us that they want us to get three percent increase in school funding. That's not enough. We need more, we need to fully fund schools. And because the cost of, because the cost of people is always going to increase, we're not going to get the same efficiencies we could of machines. We need to invest in our schools, we have to invest in our people, and we have to ask for real money. And this is something that all of us in the room should work on together.
Thank you. Maureen?
Well, I do not believe they are adequately funded and I know that we have lobbied our legislators, um, on behalf of all students in the state of Minnesota, um, for better funding. I believe the federal government also has, um, done us wrong by, uh, the special ed funding that they promised us twenty-five years ago. I believe that was never fully funded like they promised to do. So we could lobby both, um, both governments, the state and the federal, for more money and we have tried and we will keep, continue to try.
Thank you. Nellie?
Yes, thank you. Um, I would say that none of the schools, public schools in Minnesota are funded as they should be. And, you know, part of that is decisions being made, uh, at the state almost twenty years ago, where a lot of money was, you know, taken from our schools, our public schools, and didn't really return. Um, and so I would say also that Bloomington has done a good job, are keeping, keeping ourselves in the right place, you know, through the work that administration has done, where we have been able to manage and, and stay in a good situation. However, you know, the struggle continues, you know, special education, cross-subsidy, uh, ELL programs that need more and more, uh, funding and more and more kids needing services, um, social workers, you know, uh, mental health services, different types of services that we still need to, to cover and we don't have the funds for them.
Thank you. Maya?
Our schools are definitely not funded adequately. Um, we're, we're constantly having to beg for more money and I appreciate everybody who has gone to the Capitol to do so. And it's, it's not right that, that it, that we don't see the value in education, that it is truly an investment in our children, it is an investment in our community. And we need to keep up with inflation. There's constantly, um, you know, new needs such as technology, securing our schools from gun violence, um, and new specialists. And so our needs increase and I would say that, that at the same times that are, as the same time that our needs increase and inflation increases, our funds have been robbed. And I'm also concerned about our funds being, uh, going to charter schools and taking money out of our public schools.
Thank you. Heather?
Um, well, my fellow candidates have done a great job answering this question, so I apologize, I'm gonna do a lot of repeating. Um, it is, I also believe that our schools are not adequately funded. Um, when funding, uh, changed in Minnesota in two thousand and three, if you take that number and you go to two thousand and nineteen, just for inflationary costs, we are nine-point-four percent behind. So we haven't even been able to keep up with inflation over the last two decades. Um, and then when you look at the special education, um, as Maureen mentioned, the, um, federal government, back when they created IDEA, said they were gonna, uh, do forty percent of that funding. It's never gone above sixteen percent. So Bloomington Public Schools last year had to spend ten million dollars out of our general fund to cover the, um, special education, it's called a cross-subsidy, and that is then taking money from all of our students. Um, and then the other thing that is frustrating is when, um, the, um, legislature gives us a two percent increase. It's not a two percent increase of our entire budget, it's two percent of seventy percent of our budget because we have federal and local funds too. So it's, it's not always, um, said the way that it truly is.
Thank you. This next question, which we will begin with Maya, is linked to the last two. What is your view on class size in the Bloomington public schools? Too large? Just right? Too small? How would you help to, in a sense, fix class size? Um, how would you fund? How do we find the funds for class size?
Well, first of all, um, I think class size is one of the most important issues because we don't want to burn out teachers with too large class sizes. And students will leave the district, you know, parents will leave the district or at least the schools if they think that the class sizes are too large and they're not getting enough individualized attention. So I think that that is something that we definitely need to put as a, as a number-one goal. And, um, to answer your question, yes, they're, they are too large. And, and I have listened to teachers throughout the district and they have ideas for this. And one of them is, um, there are teachers on special assignment. And so some of those are excellent teachers who are being taken out of the classroom and therefore they're, they're being paid full salaries to work on curriculum. And therefore they are, um, taking, making the class sizes larger by doing this.
Thank you. John?
Oh, gosh. I have to agree that, um, it's always nice to have lower class sizes. Uh, research shows that sometimes that there isn't much of a difference in terms of academic performance, but if you're looking at personal growth, individual growth, soft skills development, class size really does make a matter. And if I, and I, if I could rule the world, I would say we'd have small school sizes as well, uh, limited to maybe a hundred and fifty people, the small communities. But we, we are where we are, right? We really need to, we really need to lobby for money for teachers, for paras and, and other support staff to really make this happen. Because so much of what we, what we are obligated to do is so dictated, we don't have much, much room to be able to, to do, uh, staff ads on the class sizes, uh, classroom sites. Um, I'll leave it there. I just want smaller schools.
Thank you. Nellie?
Thank you. Well, um, being a teacher myself, I have experienced, you know, what it feels like to have a group of forty kids in the classroom versus having twenty-five, you know, the big difference when you're working, especially when you're teaching a foreign language. So, um, of course, I, I always try to advocate for smaller class sizes. I think that's important, it allows for more connection. I do believe that, that it matters because it's allow, it allows for more connection between the teacher and your student. Um, it provides better opportunities to really help the students. Hmm, so it does, it does matter. Um, you know, administration always has to have, to make the tough decisions, you know, what they're gonna do about classes. And sometimes there's no other options but to have those big classes, uh, unfortunately. However, I know that, you know, we do have some classes that are big in Bloomington, uh, but I have worked in other school districts as well. You know, I've worked in Ridgefield, Minnetonka, um, Tinewispark in Bloomington and I know that, um, some of the classes are still not that big, um, but they're still big, yeah.
Thank you. Heather?
Okay, so, um, the research shows that, uh, class size is not as important of an indicator of a student's success as the quality of the teacher in that classroom. That said, I have been a teacher in that classroom, I have had thirty seats and been assigned thirty-two students and had to figure out where are they gonna sit, what book are they gonna eat? Well, this is books, not computers when I was teaching. Um, and so sometimes the resources are really hard to spread thin, but I think that we need to be looking at the quality of our teachers more so than the size of our classes. We also are very fortunate that if you compare our, our school district to neighboring school districts, we do have lower, smaller schools, as John was, was mentioning, our, you know, our elementary schools top out at somewhere in the four-fifty range and our high schools are in the like seventeen-hundred. And if you look at our surrounding school districts, that's much lower. Um, and we've also seen some lower class sizes around too. So, and then there's some funding, some creative funding that you can do if there's federal opportunities or state opportunities where you can put some of that money specifically into particular classes to lower those class sizes.
Thank you. Maureen?
Well, I agree that, um, we need small class sizes and we've always strived for that in Bloomington. The debate when we need to raise a class size is, you know, a, a good debate because no one wants to burden the teachers with more students. Um, and it's not good for the students either. It's, you know, the teachers and the students, no one benefits when you have a large class size. We are lucky to have ten elementary schools here in Bloomington that, um, make it easier to have small schools where, um, some of the other districts around us have, you know, three or four elementary schools which are much, much larger than any of ours, as Heather said.
Thank you. I'm gonna try a lightning round. Meaning that you're going to answer yes or no with one reason why and no run-on sentences. One compound and, and, or, you know, an extra why, but nothing more. And we will begin with Heather, who's smiling.
Oh, my gosh.
Should the school district provide free breakfast and lunch to all students?
Yes. I, I think that's a equity issue.
Thank you. Nellie?
Yes, but there are families who would be able to maybe afford lunch more than others. Yes, but there are families who would be able to maybe afford lunch more than others.
Thank you. Maya?
Definitely. We need to make sure that students are well-fed so that they are ready to learn.
Maureen?
I agree that the students need to be well-fed. You can't learn anything on an empty stomach.
Thank you. John?
Yes, because we can't assume that the kids are gonna have a better meal later that day.
Thank you. You were all very well behaved. I should've brought my bag of candy.
Like a gold star?
Chocolate.
Okay. All right. This question, we're going to start with Nellie. It's about technology. What are the pluses, and mind you, this is in a minute. What are the pluses and minuses of our policy to provide Chromebooks to students? Have they helped, hindered, or a little of both? Do you think they are worth the cost to our budget? Nellie?
Okay. So, when it comes to technology, I would say that it is worth giving kids those kind of tools, because, you know, the reality of the world that we live in now, and what they're gonna live later on, it's that. It's technology. So, you cannot just pretend like it's not there, and I try to provide some of those devices. I think that our schools, our, our teachers have been, have been working using the, the devices and using the technology in a very responsible way. You know, trying to really provide what is necessary, and when it is a necessary tool to be used. So, I would say the pro is learning and the amount of information that you can find there to learn, to really be more global. The negative side of it would be the kind of use that it can be given. You know, when they, when the Chromebooks go home, for example, when those devices are there, if there's no, like, the supervision, or sometimes it can be a distraction in the classroom as well. So, it becomes a challenge for the, especially for the teachers.
Thank you. Maya?
Yes, I have seen the benefits of technology and having the Chromebooks. The students can, as a substitute, when I'm teaching, they can send their work right to their, to the teachers, so the teachers know that they're working. That's one benefit. And they can come up with some really nice demonstrations when they're, when they're doing a presentation on the computer. So, obviously, they're, they're using them to, for, for future benefit, things that they need in their future work world. However, I do strongly feel in a balance of technology and teacher interaction. I, I'm not crazy about having them on the computers for much of the time, because I prefer to interact with the students. And also, sometimes they do go where they should not go, and especially in, when there's the flexible seating, and they can sit where they want, and they might sit against the wall, and I can't see the computers.
Thank you. Maureen?
Well, I believe the plus is, again, the equity factor. Some kids might not have access at home to a computer, and this makes sure that all students have the same access. By using the Chromebooks, we're not reinvesting into actual textbooks anymore. So, that could be part of an offset, not, not total offset, but a part of an offset to the expense of having the computers. And we also have offered to some students, a PUC, they called it, and it would get them access to Wi-Fi if they didn't have that at home. So, I believe Bloomington has really tried to keep the equity factor equal, equalizing factor, I guess it would be, for all students.
Thank you. Heather?
Yes, so, I definitely think it's worth the cost, especially because our Chromebooks in Bloomington are actually paid for by a referendum that was passed by our community back in 2013. So, it doesn't come out of general fund, it comes specifically out of the referendum money. And any of the technology enhancements that we've done from that have also come from there. I have two children who are dyslexic and just, and have dysgraphia, and their executive function skills are not awesome. So, for me, as a parent, to have them come home and we can instantly see what it is that they need to be working on at home that day. And then, also, my children use the text-to-speech option, and then, they have to just go back and do punctuation, capitalization, that type of thing. So, from a parent perspective, I've seen some great benefits from it. I've also noticed that the teachers that I've interacted with are doing a great, great job of balancing using the Chromebooks in their classroom and putting them away and doing other activities that have that more interactive piece.
Thank you. John?
Boy, so, I actually wrote a book about this. So, I can give like a five-hour lecture. But if technology is the answer, what was the question? And I think that we need to get, really tie into, really, what do we want to do with it? I did some research a couple of years ago for Uruguay. They're the first country to fully implement a one-to-one laptop per child. And they, they did it, they built it out. And we asked the question, so what now? Because when they looked at their performance, they were flat. There wasn't a change. Just having the presence of technology in the classroom didn't make a difference. And what we've, what we're learning is that you need to have good teachers to help guide you with the technology. It's the teachers that make the difference. So, technology is great in schools, but let's try to invisibilize it so we can make the learning more visible. Does that make any sense?
Thank you. The next question, we will start with Maureen. It's related to the concept of mental health in schools. Research shows that there are lots of kids who aren't feeling safe in their schools, whether it's because of race, religion, sexual identity, national origin, special education. And this is very related to mental health. So, how do you feel about the way Bloomington is dealing with mental health? And what ideas would you bring to the table to increase the effectiveness of the way kids feel? And we'll start with Maureen.
Well, the teachers are their first, the first line, and I hope that the teachers are connecting enough with the students to know if a child is, is having an issue or suffering from something. And we have social workers in the schools. We also have the, a clinic at Pond Center, with, which we have some mental health professionals at, at the clinic that, you know, if a teacher feels that the students need help, it's a free clinic that families can use in the district. And hopefully, that being steered there by the teachers and by the social workers, and that could help that student. Also, this, our schools are relatively safe compared to some. We have used our safety, the Safety and Technology Referendum to do that.
Thank you. Nellie?
Yeah, when it comes to mental health, there are so many, so many issues, so many struggles that the kids experience every day, whether it is related to depression, you know, anxiety, even the anxiety of being, of sitting in a classroom, you know, thinking that you have to do work. Sometimes it's, it's hard for the kids. I think we, we have put different strategies in schools and with our staff members on how to address the different needs of our students, where we, as teachers, or our Bloomington teachers, are always present for them as much as they can, as they're able to do it. Like Maureen said, you know, providing services at the clinic, you know, outside of the, of the school. Having professionals, social workers, working with the kids, psychologists. However, we do not have enough, of course, in, in Minnesota. We do not have the funds to make sure that we have more, more professionals working with our kids. There are more needs than there are professionals that are in schools.
Thank you. John?
In fact, I did owe to everything that Nellie just said. Bloomington is about the right size of a community where we need to invest in, in these areas. And the city's doing some great stuff. I would love it for us to find a way to make full-service community schools happen with access to health and family emergency needs too. But I think that we also need to connect on, with, with kids on a much more human level and, and allot them time to be kids. Bring in free play and play, or a chance for boredom. To go out and, and play freely, you go and experience and create rules together, rather than have things done so strictly within strict times, and you have all these pressures on. Let's find ways to take this pressure away, and I think make schools a little more fun, a little, little safer, and maybe a little more mentally healthy.
Thank you. Maya?
Well, education equity means making certain that students have what they need to feel safe, secure, and successful at school. And if they're not having their needs met, and that includes socio, socio, social, emotional needs, then I think that having access, everyone having access to the school counselors and, and possibly school psychologists is, is key. And as well as, talk about feeling safe in school goes back to smaller class sizes too. Smaller class sizes allow teachers and students to get to know each other, and students to get to know each other on a more intimate level. They can see if there's something going on, an issue that's going on that needs to be addressed. And, and also, from talking to teachers, when I have asked what they see as something that is needed in the schools, I have heard very unselfish answers such as, community, community schools offering counseling and emergency care.
Thank you. Heather?
Yes, so, this, Bloomington tackles this in two ways. The one is in-house services, meaning that a, a social worker or a counselor that's paid through the school district. And Minnesota is like 49th in the nation in our student-to-counselor ratio. So, that's one place where we need to really advocate, is at the state level, to say that that's not okay. And then, the second thing is co-location services. So, a couple of our schools have, where they've contracted with an outside agency to come in, and they provide counseling services inside the school, so that the students can access it directly during the school day. The benefit of that is that the, the provider and the teachers can interact with each other and talk about that student together, and can help support the student in the school. One thing that was frustrating for me as a parent is that I had a, a child that really needed the support and services of a social worker in the building, but our social worker was paid for by special education funds, and my child was not a special education student and was denied service. So, we need to find ways to make that happen.
Thank you. Switching gears a bit here, and we will start this next question with John. What are your thoughts about school calendar in terms of start date and start times in terms of early, late, et cetera? John?
So, I've read no research that says that students learn best from 7:35 in the morning until 2:37. I haven't said that. I have never read any research that said that, that kids learn math best from 10:30 until 11:45, right? So, I, I think that there's a lot of room for flexibility, especially for teenage minds, right? Who have a biological need to sleep in. I'm 43. I have a biological need to sleep in too. And I think that this is one of the ways that we can help meet kids where they are, to, to help provide them with environments that, that works out. How we schedule that with buses and stuff, I mean, that's, that's, that's something that I think that we can achieve as a district. But I think that we, I think that we could start moving in those areas to, to meet these very human needs.
Thank you. Maya?
Yeah, so, flipping the time so that the teenagers start school a little bit later, I think is beneficial, because we, we know that they're, that they need more sleep. And as well as, my, my son, I have an example. In 11th grade, I guess this is really common, but in 11th grade, he ended up having mono from a lack of sleep, and that's a very critical time. 11th grade is a very critical time in their schoolwork, and he got very far behind. And so, I often thought, oh, I wish schools started later for them. Luckily, St. Paul has, is doing this already, so we can learn from them. And I've read that there are some issues as far as parents saying that they have relied on older teenagers to come home first and take care of younger, younger children, as well as concern about the patrols in elementary school being out in the darker early morning hours. So, we'd just have to address those issues.
Thank you. Nellie?
Thank you. Well, my students are high schoolers, and of course, I would agree that, you know, it would be great if they could get more sleep at home. Getting more sleep, however, does not necessarily mean they went to bed earlier. You know, some of them try to go to bed earlier, but at the same time, if I have another extra 10 minutes that I can sleep in in the morning, then maybe I'll stay another extra 10 minutes in the night on my phone. So, I am not saying that they don't need to sleep, they do need that sleep. However, you know, right now, I, I have so much to tell you, and she has only given me 30 seconds. But right now, the school board has established a committee to study the, the change of time, start time, late start time. So, that, but, but in order to do that, we have to figure out a lot of different things and the impact that I, it would have in the school district if that was gonna change. You know, when I talk about impact, we have to look in, you know, what is happening in other school districts? Is it proving that it helps with test scores, attendance after or before school programs? And she doesn't let me talk anymore, so if you wanna talk about that, I can give you more information regarding what we're doing right now at the board level.
Thank you, Nellie. Heather?
So, I, did the question also talk about start date?
It did, but everybody's kind of copped out on that.
Okay, well, so let me, I wanna address that a little bit. So, I was actually the parent rep on the calendar committee for Bloomington Public Schools for two years, and let me tell you, that is the craziest puzzle ever to put together, because our elementary schools are in semesters, the middle school and high school's on trimesters, the teacher contract has so many days, like, it's just, it's insane. So, when we're talking about start date, there are so many factors that go into determining that. Now, I would love that it's always after Labor Day, but when Labor Day is so late in the year, sometimes that gets to be a challenge. So, I wanted to address that. The second one is the school start times. I agree with a lot that has been set up here already. You know, there are studies that show that academics improve. Actually, car accidents and high schoolers go down when start time is later in the day. So, there's other factors that are non-academic that are positive too. My concern is, let's say we flip them now, and our elementary school students are starting super early, what's the impact on them? And the good part is, we're not gonna be pioneers in this work. There's a lot of school districts, as had been mentioned, that have been doing this. So, asking those questions of, what about our elementary school students when we're making these decisions?
Thank you. Maureen?
Well, as far as the start date, the state legislature has mandated when we can start school. They say we can't start school till after Labor Day or after the state fair, but they don't say that part. So, that's, that's why we always start after Labor Day, because we have to. The start times, like Nellie said, we already have a, a committee that's starting to look into all these, so many questions, you know. We don't want the, the little guys out there, you know, in the dark and coming home to an empty house. You know, like they said, the high schoolers are usually home to, to watch out for them. So, there's a lot of moving parts here, sporting events, busing, all those things have to be taken into account.
Thank you. We're gonna do another lightning round, and this is a really, wow, what a question. And so, I'm gonna give all of you a few seconds to think before I call on the first person. So, everybody gets the, at least the same minimum amount of time to think. And the answer is one word plus one reason, okay? If you were able to allocate more money to either science or arts programming, but not both, which would you choose and why? That's not a fair question. And we will start with Maya.
So, I would choose art, because... So I would choose art because art helps the brain as far as doing well in science and math. And this was a very unfair question because I have a son who is majoring in science-type classes and a daughter who is an artist.
I won't say that I'm sorry. I didn't, I did not, however, make up the question. John?
I would focus on the arts because the arts lead to soft skills development that help us develop skills that help us lead into, or take on jobs that have not been invented yet, being a nice person, entrepreneurial, and...
And, and, and...
And I'm out of my time.
You're done.
You know it.
Heather?
I would also have to say art because that subject does not get enough attention in our society in general.
Thank you. Maureen?
Well, I also would say art because that's what usually gets cut first. You know, the band program, arts programs, those are, those are the things, you know, the extracurriculars are what we as a board have always struggled with. We want the, you know, you got to have math and reading, so that's why I say art.
Thank you. Nellie?
Arts because of the benefits that it provides to a human being for healing, personal growth, for feeling free and feeling relaxed, and then opening up the brain for learning, other type of learning.
Thank you. I'm dithering over questions here, they're coming up. Okay, we'll go with this one. And we'll start with Nellie. When an overwhelming majority of parents, students, and constituents disagree with a stance that you feel strongly about, what do you do?
I, once again, I listen to your concerns first. I want to know and understand why the concerns and where those concerns are coming from. And then I look for ways to provide information of why I would make a decision, you know, and I provide that type of information with facts, with enough research that I've done. So I know that we cannot always agree on some of the things that happened, but sometimes there is a reason behind. And even though if I listen, maybe we can come to a place where we can find a solution together. Maybe there's a different solution.
Thank you. Heather?
Okay, so this is not going to be a perfect analogy, and I apologize. When I was a teacher, our principal decided that my grade was going to lose a .5 special education teacher, and we were not happy about it. And so he said, you know what, at our next, at your next prep time, I will explain. And so he went through and started from, here's my school budget, all the way down to the decision to cut a .5 in our classroom or in our grade. Well, I still didn't agree with the decision, but I couldn't argue where he had made those decisions or where he had come from. So for me, it's the understanding, the why or the perspective of the folks that I don't agree with, and that is really key to me. So listening, but it's not just, it's like active listening, like listening and really trying to understand their perspectives and how they differ from mine.
Thank you. Maureen?
Well, I agree, that's, that's the, how you compromise is by listening, by understanding where someone's coming from, and you telling them your, your view and why you're thinking that way. And compromise is the only way that we get anything done in this world.
Thank you. John?
Gee, it's a tough one. I, you know, I'm really inspired by people like Dick Bergstrom, who I always see out in the community, whatever events are out there. And I think that this being present in the community is really key. And it's also engagement and trying to experience things from, from perspectives of others, coming to understand each other, finding common solutions, and really being important that it's, as we try to find ways to come together as a community, that we, that we just really exclude nobody and that we care for each other.
Thank you. Maya?
Well, as far as being on a school board, I'm motivated to listen to each person's side and, and each person, and actively listen so that I understand it. And if I were to have a difference of opinion, I would expect that they would do the same for me. And, and that's the same issue with the community. We are hearing about a lot of disagreements in the community right now over, for example, the community center. And I think we need to just have people come together and look at pros and cons whenever you're making a decision. Write a list of pros and cons, come up with alternative ideas instead of just shooting down something, and asking, how can we compromise on this? And I think we can usually compromise on almost any issue.
Thank you. This next question will be the last question of the evening before closing remarks. And we will start with Heather. We live in an environment of school choice. What is one thing that Bloomington Public Schools could do to better compete in the marketplace of choice?
Okay, so this issue is actually quite dear to me. So I have three students in Bloomington Public Schools. We did pull our middle child out of Bloomington to go to a charter school for her middle school years, and I wanted to explain why. So when I was going through BPS, we had an alternative middle school or an alternative junior high called Bravo. My brother attended Bravo, and Bravo saved my brother's education. And unfortunately, in Bloomington, we do not have alternative education for students until they get to the point of failing. And I really feel if we were to find creative ways for students to participate in education that are not just the cookie cutter pieces that we have, that we will be able to retain more students in our districts. I think a lot of times people are going to charters because they have something unique and different, and if we're able to retain that here in Bloomington, then we can keep school choice here.
Thank you. Maureen?
Well, I think Bloomington has made great leaps and attempts at competing in the marketplace. Our Bloomington Career and College Academy has many offerings, and every year they increase that students in high school can go and learn about being an EMT or a nurse or the technology field or auto mechanics. There's countless, I'm sorry, countless other choices that are available. We also started our computer science curriculum at two of our elementary schools. We're trying that this year, and it's going well so far, so hopefully that will expand to other elementary schools. And we also have on the other end of the spectrum, the Dimensions Academy for the students that are excelling. And we had our first class graduate from their, from Dimensions Academy last year. They graduated with their two high school classes, but they graduated with a lot of extra credit for college.
Thank you. Maya?
I think that tapping into the creativity and passions of our teachers and finding out what, how they think they can make our schools better, because I've listened to a lot of teachers and they have a lot of sound, creative ideas. And just for example, the, the teacher who created the outdoor adventure program, so somebody, or there were three teachers who created that 50 some years ago, and they were very enthusiastic and created a successful program. And when something like that is just cut after many years of, of students participating and moving on to volunteering with the program and even being passed down to another teacher, a son of one of the program's beginners, I just feel that, you know, what, what do we need to do to attract passionate, committed, and dedicated teachers? And this is exactly the type of thing that would, that would do the opposite.
Thank you. John?
Does anybody here know why Bravo was shut down? Because I don't. You do?
I'm the founder.
All right, so we'll, we'll loop back, and probably Heather, want to hear from you too, why Bravo shut down. I feel that if we kill the programs that make us unique, others will take our money to do it, and they'll do it a lot worse than how we can do it, at lower quality. So I think the bottom line is that we need to invest into a variety of programming and not just cookie cutter solutions for cookie cutter schools.
Thank you.
I yield my time.
Yes. I feel like I'm in the Senate, I yield my time back. And we know how rarely that happens. We are now ready for closing remarks. Each candidate gets one minute, and we will begin with Maureen.
Well, first I'd like to thank the League and the PTSA Council for hosting this event. Before I served on the board for 16 years, I was also a member of the PTSA Council, and I know firsthand what we can accomplish together, and my record on the school board demonstrates that I can work with and lead my colleagues to collaborate with our community partners, the city, the education foundation, and had been counting for the betterment of all of our students. As a board member, I have participated in championing innovative programs and initiatives that help students succeed, attract families, and serve as a model for other communities. My husband Ralph and I are the proud parents of two children who graduated from Bloomington Schools and went on to postgraduate degrees and are now productive citizens. What I hope, I also have a grandson who lives here in Bloom, and will go to Bloomington Schools. And what I hope for him is now the same thing that I hope for my children when they were growing up, and the same thing that I hope for all Bloomington children, a high-quality education that opens doors of opportunity throughout their lifetimes. There are many challenges ahead, and experience, stability, and leadership are vital. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather?
Okay, so campaigns are crazy things. It is really hard as a candidate to get across who you are in a forum or a 30-seconds at your door or in a five-minute video. So I would really encourage anyone that wants to know more about me to find my website at startsforschools.com. I think the program has that information in there. Contact me because I'd love to have more deeper conversations about issues that we've discussed today and other issues that we didn't get to. So I am a parent, I'm an educator, and I'm a leader. I understand the role of a school board. I know the difference between governance and management, making sure that I'm staying on the governance side. And I bring strengths that have served me well in all of my other roles, either here in Bloomington or at statewide organizations, and I would love to serve you as the Bloomington School Board.
Thank you. Maya?
So teaching and advocating for children is at the heart of everything I do, and right now it happens to be a very critical time for public education, and it is the reason I decided to run for school board. I am motivated to be an advocate for Bloomington Public Schools, which are the heart and soul of our community. Strong public schools attract families, businesses, workers, and ultimately students who want to give back to society. It is vital that we let our students know that we value each and every one of them. This includes making certain that they feel safe, secure, and supported in our schools. Strong public schools make a strong effort to retain and attract teachers and support staff by making sure that they, too, feel valued. One way we can do this is by listening to them. My experience teaching throughout the district has given me the unique opportunity to listen to the voices of our school community. I am dedicating myself to advocating for those voices. Thank you to those of you who dedicated themselves to making this event happen tonight, as well as to those who took the time to be here tonight.
Thank you. John?
Gosh, well, thanks again for hosting us, and thank you, everybody, for coming. You know, we have quite a few challenges facing the district. We talked about equity, we have financial challenges, we have changing demographics, but what we didn't talk about was morale. We're losing really great teachers, we're losing really great administrators. I think we can do better. So I hope to bring my deep expertise into our school district, show leadership, contribute to the conversation, and find solutions so we may best help students, our community members achieve their best education futures. And again, I yield my time.
Thank you. Nellie?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this forum and providing this opportunity for us and for the community. And thank you to you, you know, friends, neighbors, and colleagues who are here with us tonight. Bloomington Schools is a leader in education at the state and the national level, and I am honored to have been able to serve for Bloomington Schools as a board member for the past seven and a half years. This is something I would like to continue to do because I think I'm, I'm not done yet. I, there's a lot more that I can do, that I can use, I can use my expertise on. I love Bloomington, I love serving this community, I love serving the children and the families. And I think, you know, the biggest reason why we have a very strong school district is because of you, because of our community, because you have been very supportive, because we have very good teachers. We have excellent leaders, too, in the, in the school district. So my time is over, so thank you, and I hope to earn your vote.
Thank you. Thank you, candidates, for participating in this forum and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. As Teddy Roosevelt said, "The honor goes to those who are actually willing to put themselves in the arena." I also leave you with one question that I chose not to ask. It came in late, and it's so far from being a one-minute question that I just couldn't do it to you. It would mean that you really need to look at a line item budget for the Bloomington Public Schools. The question is this: Are funds appropriately allocated in our schools? If not, how would you reallocate? In your mind, what gets more money and what gets cut? So something for you to go away and think about.
Homework.
Thank you. Homework, there we go. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Bloomington and to the Bloomington PTSA for sponsoring this forum. It has been video recorded and can be viewed online at the LWV Bloomington website, the City of Bloomington website, and on YouTube. It will also be rebroadcast frequently on Bloomington Cable TV until Election Day. Thank you, audience, for attending tonight's forum. Please remember to vote, starting tomorrow, early voting on or before Tuesday, November 5th. That concludes the forum. Thank you. Now, can we give a round of applause to our candidates?